I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals for October 3, 2019, to order. Will the secretary please call the role?
James Carmen.
Present.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Malika Barlow.
Present.
Christopher Camer.
Present.
Michael Hyman.
Michael Wood.
Alfred Fields.
Present.
Will you please stand for the pledged flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Does someone have a comment on the minutes of the August meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think a correction on the motion for the approval of the item that passed four to one. It indicates that I abstained. I don't believe that I did. I think I voted against it rather than abstaining. I don't -- okay. If we could reflect that, thank you.
Is that noted? So noted. Would someone care to make a motion?
I'll move with that correction.
Is there a second? All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there a report from the zoning staff?
Good afternoon, members of the board. John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. Nothing new to report, but just want to bring your attention to the end of the agenda after this case. It is your annual meeting, which would normally be held in September, but because we didn't have a meeting, we'll do that this time. So then you'll do your nomination and vote on chairperson and vice-chairperson. We know you've been in the position as an interim basis, and you know, that could continue, but that's up to the board to decide. Just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Thank you. Okay. We have one case in front of us today, and our board has seven members. We have five voting members. And you will have to receive four affirmative votes in order for your article to pass. The applicant will make his presentation on the case, of which, after that, the zoning board will ask any questions if they have any. We will then ask for comments from the public. Let me back up. The staff will make their presentation if they have any comments and any questions from the board. Then we'll ask for any comments from the audience, whether for or against. And again, you will need four affirmative votes in order for your activity to pass. Do we have any declaration of ex parte communications? Start at the end.
None.
None.
State your names.
Alfred Fields, none.
Michael Wood, none.
Chris Hagan, I've had no ex parte communication, but I did have a disclosure, so I can make that at this time. I'm employed by a civil engineering consulting firm that is engaged with providing civil engineering services to the applicant, FPL. In discussions with the board attorney, even though our firm was not involved in the engineering services for this application, the matter that's in front of us today, in discussions with the board attorney, it's determined that just -- and because we have a full quorum of members here today, that it's best that I'll recuse myself from the vote on today's matter.
Malika Barlow, no ex parte communications.
Chris Camer, no ex parte communications.
Michael Hyman, no ex parte communications.
And James Carmen, no ex parte communications. We'll now have anyone who wishes to speak for -- who wants to speak period at this event today. Would you stand and be sworn?
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Do we have any continued cases? None. That being the case, we'll have the --
I'll be back.
Okay. Do we have the applicant make their presentation? Or would you read the case, please? I'm sorry.
Zoning Board of Appeals case numbers 3375 and 3375A. Request by Colleen Walter of Urban Design Kill Day Studios on behalf of Florida Power and Light for the following. A Class A, a Class B special use permit with waivers to allow for an off-site accessory parking lot within the community service zoning district. B, a variance from the requirement of Section 94-302(c)(1) to allow a seven-foot-high fence within the front setback. C, a variance from the requirement of Section 94-443(b)(2) to allow the parking areas to exceed the maximum 25 percent interruption in the required landscape buffer stripped for vehicular ingress and egress. D, a variance from the requirement of Section 94-443(c)(3) to exempt the parking areas from meeting the minimum 75 percent requirement for Category 1 shade trees within the interior of the parking areas. The approximately 9.97 acre site is located approximately 540 feet north of Okeechobee Boulevard between Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard and South Chillingworth Drive within Commission District Number Two, Commissioner Corey Neary.
Excuse me, I'm just going to interrupt before we get started. Just for some of our newer members, I just want to make sure that if any of us recognize anyone in the audience, that might be something that we would consider putting on the record. Thank you. I know that is not the case for me. Just want to make sure my other colleagues are aware of that. Thank you.
Would you like us to do that now?
Yes, generally, it's been the practice that I've seen that we do that when we talk about ex parte communications, that if we do identify anyone who might be speaking, that we do put on the record so it can be evaluated whether or not it's still appropriate to be a voting member.
Mr. Chairman, would this be the proper time to make that?
I'll defer to Mr. Thomas.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Tell me that again, please.
If we recognize or have any relationships with anyone who might be speaking over the board right now, to see, to make sure there's no conflict or potential conflict with voting.
Perhaps "recognize" is a bit broad, but if you have a relationship that would interfere with your ability to objectively consider what they are presenting, I think that would be appropriate to disclose.
Thanks for the instruction. I know at times I've made sure I disclose that. Thank you.
Any other comment? Sorry.
I don't want to insult Colleen, but you know, I mean, we don't have a relationship, but we certainly know each other for years.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Colleen Walter with Urban Design Kill Day Studios. I'm a certified land planner and licensed landscape architect in the state of Florida. Here this afternoon representing Florida Power and Light, the applicant for the applications that the clerk just read. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce with Florida Power and Light John Rosenthal, who is the project manager, Don Kizlouski, who is the Director of External Affairs, Chris Miller with CBRE, who is the project manager for CBRE, and Leo Giangrande, who is the project engineer, and also Ally Palmer with Urban Design Kill Day Studios, who has been working with me on the application. Thank you for the opportunity this afternoon. Before you this afternoon, we have the Class B special use for an accessory off-site parking lot. Associated with that are three waivers and three variances. The property that is under consideration is part of a larger transmission corridor that FPL owns. It runs from I-95 on the east to Indian Road on the west. The transmission corridor is 150 feet deep. It is north of Okeechobee Boulevard and directly south of a drainage canal. And within that corridor are large overhead transmission lines and large poles that support the large transmission lines. Over the years, FPL has allowed third parties to petition the city to gain approval for off-site accessory parking lots. And approximately 15 acres of the overall 25-acre property already has been granted approvals for off-site parking lots, and these parking lots exist within the corridor. However, at this time, in lieu of allowing third parties to come in and petition the city, FPL has submitted their own application for the four remaining vacant parts of the transmission corridor. FPL still intends to lease or license the use of these off-site parking lots to third parties. However, they also have their own secondary use, which is they want the opportunity to utilize these sites for staging and recovery during -- before, during, and after any type of extreme storm event. So when they do license these parcels, as part of that agreement, they will have the right to ask that the properties be vacated so that they can use it for their needs. These parcels have also been designed so that they can function both as accessory parking lots for third parties as well as for the secondary use that FPL is considering. And you'll see a little bit of that as I walk you through the design of the sites. The first parking area, what we call Parking Area 1, is located on the west side of Spencer Drive. To the south is Wells Fargo Bank and Denny's, also the Classroom Teachers Association. To the north is the West Palm Lane apartment complex. West of the site are existing accessory off-site lots that serve the car dealerships that are located along Okeechobee Boulevard. This is a view of the existing transmission corridor. You can see the tall overhead lines. The image in the bottom left is the 20-foot alley that runs on the south side of all of these parking areas, and that is what provides access to them. The image on the right is a view from the site looking over the 50-foot-wide canal to West Palm Lane Apartments. What is proposed is an 86-space parking lot, and you can see that it has somewhat of a unique design with some big green areas within the middle of it. The reason for that is that is where the big transmission poles are located. So there has been a setback provided so that for maintenance or the eventual need for a pole replacement, that FPL can get their trucks in there to provide those services. The parking lot will be completely landscaped along the perimeter, and the landscape that is proposed exceeds the code requirements. Along the northern boundary, which abuts the canal, with residential on the north side of the canal, a five-foot buffer would be required by code. Proposed is a 15-foot buffer that will include a six-foot-high wall. Shrubs will be planted on the exterior side of the wall and trees on the interior side of the wall. The remaining properties on the east-south will be constructed similarly, but instead of a wall, there will be a six-foot-height chain-link fence with three strands of barbed wire. So essentially, that brings the fence to a seven-foot height. That will be along the Spencer Drive frontage and along the alley on the south. Again, those landscape buffers have been upsized. Along Spencer Drive, the buffer would be required to be five feet. Proposed is 10 feet. Along the alley, the buffer would be required to be five feet and proposed is eight feet. And those extra widths allow for the placement of the shrubs on the exterior side of the fence and the trees on the interior side of the fence. Parking lot will also be completely lit, and there will be security cameras installed as part of the site lighting. The lights will be LED. They will be pointed, directed downward, and they will have the houseside cutoff shields to minimize any light trespass. On the western perimeter, the fencing will connect into the existing fence that encloses the existing parking lot. However, there also will be a five-foot landscape buffer provided in that location with trees and a hedge. Access to this parking area will be from the alley. There are two access points proposed. The upper graphic shows you a cross-section through the site, which is 150 feet wide. Shows the location of West Palm Lane on the right-hand side, the 50-foot canal, the 15-foot landscape buffer that will include the hedge, the wall, and the canopy trees. What is proposed is a multi-trunk silver buttonwood, which is a spreading canopy tree. So the canopy in and of itself will be in addition to the wall to block the views from the north. And you'll see from the images at the bottom of the slide, the image on the left is a view from the north side of the canal, looking towards the commercial along Okeechobee Boulevard. And what is proposed with the wall, the trees, and the hedge will essentially screen from view those, the proposed improvements, as well as the back of the existing buildings that are there. Now, I will share with you that Parking Areas 2, 3, and 4 are all treated very similarly. So instead of going through in great detail, again, all of that information, I'm going to point out essentially where the differences are, because the same treatment with the 15-foot buffer on the north, the wider buffers adjacent to the right-of-way and the alley have been incorporated into all of the parking lots. Parking Area 2 is located on the east side of Spencer, behind Westward Plaza. Cardinal Newman High School is to the northwest, and the Palm Beach Lakes South Neighborhood Association is to the northeast. A view of the existing site, again, you'll see the large power poles and utility lines. Existing within this site is a cell tower antenna and accessory building that's about halfway down the Westward Shopping Center, and that has been incorporated into the design of the parking lot. Proposed here is a 470-space parking lot. Again, similar design. The large green areas are where there are existing poles, and those setbacks will provide access. Access points are from the alley on the back of Westward Plaza. Same treatment with landscape buffering as it relates to the east side. However, where the site is adjacent to Cardinal Newman High School, in lieu of a wall, what is proposed is the six-foot-height fence with the three strands of barbed wire. So that will be where the site is adjacent to non-residential. There's an image, again, of what the view from Cardinal Newman looking to the back of Westward Plaza is. And on the right-hand side, it shows what that view will look like with the proposed The residential will be treated just as Parking Area 1, where a wall will be installed with the shrubs on the exterior, trees on the interior. Parking Areas 3 and 4 are located on both the east and west side of Congress Avenue. Parking Area 3 is proposed with 76 parking spaces, and Parking Area 4 has 186 parking spaces. To the south of Parking Area 4 is Roger Dean Chevrolet. To the south of Parking Area 3 is the Hyundai dealership. Palm Beach Lakes Neighborhood Association is the neighborhood also to the north of both of these, on the north side of the canal. Views of what Parking Area 3, the current conditions, and Parking Area 4. The site plan and parking lot design for both, again, similar to the others. One difference here is the landscape buffer on the east side of Congress Avenue is 35 feet in width, and that is because there are existing utilities that run within that area that we could not put any improvements on. So there's a wider landscape buffer proposed for Parking Area 4 adjacent to the right-of-way. Again, very similar treatment for these, because they are both adjacent to residential. You can see from the images on the left, that is the view from Congress Avenue looking south towards the Hyundai dealership. They have a pretty significant landscape buffer along the north side of their dealership. However, with the existing improvements, that buffer will be enhanced, as shown on the image on the right. Not so much the same for the Roger Dean Chevrolet. Again, the view across the canal and across the site is a clear view of the back of Roger Dean, and with the proposed improvements, that view will be blocked from those residents and anyone who travels using Congress Avenue. For the Class B special use permit, there are three waivers that are associated with that, and these are pretty much the same waivers that I believe the zoning board of appeals has seen on the other applications that have come in historically. The first is a waiver to allow the storage of vehicles on these sites. This use will not have any detrimental impacts, and it helps to further support the businesses that exist along Okeechobee Boulevard, as you've seen with the other parking lots that are there, that provide storage opportunities for primarily the automotive dealerships, and that takes the pressure off any type of encroachment into the residential area for them looking for additional locations for parking. The buffering that is proposed around all of the parking areas will be an aesthetic improvement, and the security features with these lots being secured with fencing and the access gated will also be a benefit to the community. The same type of use has been approved, as I mentioned, you know, throughout this corridor, and to our knowledge, there have been no negative ramifications of accommodating that use within the corridor. The second waiver is to allow off-site parking as pretty much the only use on these lots. It is an accessory use to the commercial uses that are located to the south along Okeechobee Boulevard. The site has a community service zoning district, which anticipates a lower intensity use than a commercial zoning district. However, the community service zoning district does anticipate a use, and right now, this site is underutilized in that it only serves as a transmission corridor. Other parcels within the transmission corridor do have this accessory parking use, which, again, has been a benefit to all of the parties involved. So with being able to develop the balance of this transmission corridor with this use, it is a passive use where vehicles are stored. They don't come and go on a regular basis. The dealerships are located in close proximity, and again, there's no anticipation of any detrimental impacts from the balance of these parcels being developed for accessory parking. The third waiver is a waiver from the requirement to have all principal uses within 300 feet of the accessory parking lot. And primarily, this waiver is required for FPL's secondary use. FPL really does not have any existing facilities within 300 feet of the sites, unless, of course, you consider the transmission line their facilities. But because of the fact that they would be utilizing this site for storage of their vehicles, that necessitated having to ask for a waiver, and as the actual location of the third-party users has not yet been identified, this waiver will also apply to the potential third-party users so that we don't have to come back and ask for that waiver if, for some reason, somebody is not within the 300 feet of the site. Staff has reviewed these requests and the standards that are included in the code, and as you've seen from your staff report, they are recommending approval of the Class B special use and these three waivers. There also are three variances that are associated with this request. And I'll walk you through those. The first variance is in regards to the security fence that is proposed around the perimeter of the site and specifically where it is located along a right-of-way. Because the site, where the site abuts the right-of-way, that is what's considered a front setback, because that's the only side of the site adjacent to a right-of-way. Within a front setback, the height of a fence is limited to four feet. We are requesting a variance to allow the six-foot-height chain-link fence with the three strands of barbed wire, which essentially brings the fence height to seven feet. So it's a variance request for three feet. The buffer has been widened so that the fence can be set back from the right-of-way line, and the shrub plantings can be planted in front of the fence, which will then essentially screen both the fence and the parking area. Because the primary access to the site is off of the alley and not off of the adjacent right-of-way, the increased fence height and the increased hedge height will not interfere at all with site visibility getting into and out of the site and will act as an aesthetic barrier to further screen the use of the site. The second variance has to do with what the code identifies as interruptions, and interruptions are essentially driveways. The code has a requirement that a perimeter property of a site cannot be interrupted more than 25 percent of its length. In this instance, the parking lots have been designed for the secondary use of FPL, being able to utilize it for staging, as well as recognition that FPL will need to get trucks there to service their transmission facilities over the years. In lieu of doing the traditional apron that you typically see on streets in the city of West Palm Beach, what is proposed here is a 25-foot radius. Because of the narrowness of the alley, the radius is needed to be able to get larger trucks into the site. Even though the driveway itself is only 24 feet, and if you had to only calculate the width of the driveway for the interruption, the site would be under the 25 percent. But in this case, because we have to calculate both the radiuses on both sides and the width of the driveway, essentially, there is a break of about 65 feet, and that's what necessitates the variances for three of these sites for interruptions. However, the utilization of the radius does not impact the landscape buffer itself, because you still would need a site corner for visibility there. So the same amount of landscaping is provided as what is required per code. So there's no reduction in trees or shrubs being requested as part of this variance, only the opportunity to have an increased interruption. So for Parking Area 1, with the two driveways that are proposed, that results in a 30 percent interruption, so 5 percent over the 25 percent that's permitted by code. For Parking Areas 3 and 4, Parking Area 3 only has one access point. That results in a 25.2 percent interruption, so just a minor increase there. And Parking Area 4 has three driveway locations, which also results in a 30 percent interruption. However, as you probably saw in your staff report on page 8, when you do a calculation of the interruptions as it relates to the entire transmission corridor, taking into account all of the existing parking areas and their access points, the overall calculation is less than 25 percent. So we believe that that is a mitigating factor for the variances that are needed for these three parking areas, not to mention the fact that their access is limited to only the alley. If you had multiple frontages and you could have multiple access points, your accesses could be dispersed, and then obviously, you wouldn't be putting all of your access points on one perimeter of the site. The third variance is in regards to the canopy trees that are required within the interiors of the parking areas, and this variance is necessitated by a conflict between the state statutes and the city codes. The city codes require that 75 percent of the trees that are planted within parking areas be what are called a Category 1 tree. These are the large shade trees, the live oaks, the mahogany's, the green buttonwoods. These are the large shade trees, the live oaks, the mahogany's, the green buttonwoods. And the purpose of planting shade trees is to provide shade and to essentially minimize the heat index from heat coming off of the asphalt area. There are overhead power lines throughout these entire sites, and there is a statute, a provision in the Florida statutes that says that local governments are prohibited from adopting regulations that require plantings of vegetation that will achieve a height greater than 14 feet within an electric right-of-way. Also, FPL, as some of you may know, has their own publication, Plant the Right Trees in the Right Place, which essentially encourages planting smaller trees underneath and in proximity to power lines. And those obviously are for obvious reasons of not conflicting with the power lines. So for that reason, we are requesting this variance. I would like to point out that again, this is not a variance to eliminate any landscape material. In lieu of planting the category one trees, the landscape plans show that category two and three trees will be planted within the landscape, within the parking areas. However, category two and three trees, which are smaller trees, have a smaller canopy and therefore, result in a reduction of shade. So working with city staff, I'd like to give a shout out to Ray and Penny, who have been working very closely with the applicant on this. What we have done is a comparison of the reduction of shade, in shade, that would occur within the four parking areas as a result of using category two and three trees in lieu of category one trees. What is proposed to offset the heat island effect is that parking areas three and four, in lieu of being constructed with black asphalt, will be constructed with a white concrete, which is a very highly reflective pavement. So it will offset the loss of shade. So the highly reflective pavement area that is created will reflect solar heat and that exceeds the reduction in the shaded area. So ultimately, at the end of the day, it ends up being actually better than if we had just utilized the large canopy trees, which again, is really not an option on the site. I will not bore you with the variance standards. However, we have addressed all of them in the justification statement, and staff has reviewed them as part of the application, and you saw them in the back of your staff report. Staff has found that the requests comply with the standards and are recommending approval of all of the variances. FPL and Urban Design Kill Day Studios has done community outreach. We met with the Palm Beach Lakes Neighborhood Association on September 10th. The Neighborhood Association was pleased to see that there would be improvements on these sites. They were also pleased to find out that they would be secured and lit. They had a couple of questions in regards to lighting, just to make sure that it would not have any light trespass on their neighborhood, which the way the lighting is designed, that will not happen. They also had some comments on the improvements to the alley and that when the potholes are removed, that may encourage people to drive faster on the alley. So as our project engineer is working with the city engineering department, they're going to be looking at what can be done in conjunction with alley improvements and any type of deterrent for excess speed. I met with a representative of the West Palm Lane Apartments and provided her with the information on this project. I followed up with her several times and have not received any further comment. Don Kizlowski and I met with Bob Savage from Cardinal Newman High School. He is the director of Facilities and Systems Administrator. He was very pleased to see these improvements behind Westward Plaza, both from a security standpoint as well as an aesthetic standpoint. In conclusion, I would like to touch on the conditions of approval that are on page two of your staff report. We have been working with staff to make some modifications to these conditions since the staff report was published. The first condition is under the Class B special use permit, condition A. In discussing the alley and any potential improvements that would be necessitated by the development of these sites, as has been city policy, the applicant is required to look at that portion of the alley in front of the parking area. So what we have done is made that clear with the changes to this language to reflect that it is the, that portion of the alley abutting the project site. And the engineering department has reviewed this condition change, and they are in agreement with it. So this really is just a clarification of where that will apply. As an aside, there is an informal site plan application that is undergoing review concurrent with this ZVA application. And our, the project engineer for this project has been working very closely with the city's engineering services department. And as part of that, they will be looking at the, in detail, what the alley improvements will be. The second condition, we would like to propose a replacement condition. This is under item number two, the variance conditions of approval. At the time that the staff report went to print, the applicant was still working with city staff as it relates to the mitigation measures for the replacement of category one trees with category two and three trees. As I indicated, what is proposed is that parking areas three and four will be constructed with a highly reflective pavement surface. Staff is in agreement with that approach. They feel that that is appropriate mitigation. And therefore, we would request to replace condition two A with the language that is there, the property owner shall construct parking areas three and four with a white concrete, I should say, surface to create approximately 59,000 square feet of reflective surface to reduce the heat island effect of the project. With that, I would like to conclude the presentation. On behalf of FPL, I would like to ask your approval of these various requests, subject to the conditions of approval as modified. Thank you very much for your consideration. We would be happy to answer any questions that you have, staff has, or that members of the public have. Thank you very much.
Have any questions?
I do. Oh, you go first.
Start over here.
I have one question, maybe for city attorney, is, does the modification to the white concrete, does that remove the condition? Or is that, or is that the condition? Because when this was written, the condition was that you were looking into some form of...
Mitigation.
In terms of the standards that's been established by the city, we can't change those. Those are official standards. You can find that under the circumstances of this case, that standard would not be applicable, and it would not serve as a basis for denying the request.
Right, but if we were to approve the request, would we do so without the condition?
Yes, if the condition isn't applicable to the circumstances, the facts of this case.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. So I just have a few questions I'm hoping you just clarify so that it'll help me make an informed decision. So my first question, the application that's before us, is this an essential, is this essential to FPL and providing electricity to their customers?
It supports their opportunity to provide electricity to their customers. First off, it's a revenue generator, and then secondly...
Or FPL.
For FPL. And then, secondly, it provides the opportunity for staging during storm events.
Which they own the property, which they could, I've seen them park their vehicles on grass unpaid, and they own this property. So they would be able to do that without this variance. Park for staging when we do need their support and assistance as we are preparing for a storm.
Correct.
Correct. They own the property. And again, my question was more, is it essential to providing electricity to, I understand it generates revenue, and they have other sources of that too. It's not solely dependent on this application.
Correct. The, the providing of the electricity is already there with the transmission lines.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And when you use the word not detrimental, are you taking into consideration some of the concerns the city had raised with the environmental impacts of water runoff and surface heat and stuff? How are you using that term not detrimental? Are you looking at the environment too, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So could you address that in helping me better understand how, because I feel like part of this application right now is a little premature, that there's still some things that you try addressing here. But I just want to better understand what your recommendation is to us to evaluate this, how it's not detrimental in looking at part of the environment? Because we've got this large green area that now we're talking about paving all of it. Where I understand there's been applications and approval in the past, not to say that we don't become wiser through the years, or we look at a larger impact. It's one thing to have exceptions. But can you just address that for me? I apologize.
Oh, sure. Sure, yes. And I actually will probably enlist some help from Leo as well. But this application is, the parking lot is being designed to comply with all of the current land development permit requirements from the South Florida Water Management District as well as from the city of West Palm Beach. There are accommodations made as part of the drainage design to meet the criteria to hold water onsite before it is discharged. As I mentioned, on the heat island effect, the two parking lots will be constructed with a concrete surface, which mitigates for the loss, the reduction in shade. So in looking at the environment, those are primarily, there is no existing vegetation on this site, and there is no existing...
With the exception of grass.
With the exception of grass, yes. But no, no habitat. It's not like it's a pine flat wood or a wetland or anything like that. So development of this site is essentially taking it from grass to a parking lot. But there's no disturbance to any ecosystems or habitat, protected habitat or anything like that. I'll see if Leo wants to add anything on the drainage.
Good afternoon. Leo Jean Grande with Jean Grande Engineering and Planning. In addition to that, you don't really have an existing storm water management system out there. So even though you have an open area that's grass, it's unmanaged, unplanned, undesigned. So you end up with a better condition in your post-development term because you're actually managing your off-site flows, any other erosion factors that come into play. So in the appearance, I can understand the question of how do you turn grass into pavement and tell me that it got better? The reason it got better is that you have water quality requirements, water quantity requirements, onsite storage requirements that make us responsible for being a good neighbor to the surrounding when right now, it is what it is and it does what it does. So.
Thank you. And it's just that you're saying that that's another process, just not deflected in any of the, in the PowerPoint or what's before us today in applications, what you're stating?
Part of the permit.
Dealing with the permit.
Yep, that would be part of the permit review.
It's part of the permit and the site planning and everything else, which is that level of design.
And with your proposal about using the white concrete, you're only requesting the replacement of that with lots three and four. Why not with all of them? What was the, why did you all come back and saying, instead of, you know, working with staff in the city, you are suggesting just three and four and not all of them?
We were looking for an equivalency on the mitigation and the calculations that were done to determine the reduction in shade. And the reduction in shade was 52,000 square feet. So in looking at mitigating for that reduction in shade by, and again, we weren't going to pave a portion of one parking lot, so by paving both parking lots three and four, that ends up with over 59,000 square feet. So that's more highly reflective than the loss of shade.
But generally, white concrete does assist with surface heat. And I, is it more expensive to use white concrete then? It is. So there's also a cost. Obviously, the less you have to use the concrete, the, the less the expense is. Thank you. I don't think I have any other questions right now. I appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Hi, Colin. Couple of questions of, help me understand the relationship between the other people who have already been through this process, the other auto dealers, if you will, through the process, and FPNL's ownership or control over those lots that aren't included as a part of this petition?
I can do that, and I will probably enlist John Rosenthal's help for that. FPL owns all of the corridor. So in the past, FPL has provided a consent form as owner to a third party who has filed the application as the applicant. And they have come in on an individual basis throughout the corridor. In this instance, FPL is coming in as both owner and applicant. However, FPL does have agreements in place with the existing parking lots. And I will let John speak to that while I pull up that slide.
Thank you.
So currently...
Identify yourself, please.
Sure. John Rosenthal, Florida Power and Light, 700 Universe Boulevard, Juneau Beach, Florida. So the properties that are currently under license, they, the applicants came forward at times in the past, secured the approvals to build the site and use it. And we maintain those licenses today with our asset management team. And with this new concept, we thought we would consolidate the remaining parcels as one project and keep better controls and make for a better improved area rather than piecemealing it. And we would, in the future, upon the approvals, upon building it, engage with the same business community that aligns Okeechobee to enter into a similar type of agreement, a license agreement, to use the parking spaces established. Hopefully, that answers your question.
It does. It sets the stage for the question, basically is what it does. And I, and I, I think I'd have to turn to the staff to ask the question, which is, were the same conditions applied to those people? Well, we have continuity is where I'm, where I'm looking to go here with the entire strip from one end to the other of landscaping that's apparently similar of, of treatment of the tree work and everything else, so that we have something that's an asset for the community at the end of the day from a visual and, and park setting in a, in a, in a situation like this.
Good afternoon. Linda Louis, planner for the record. So the approvals have been granted since 1984, and since that period of time, the code has changed over the years. So in terms of consistency with the same requirements, you know, the landscape code has changed, so obviously, there are different landscaping requirements.
Are, are those landscaped at this time? Is this an opportunity for us to have it done now as we sit in looking at FPNL's property in its entirety to bring it into not compliance, but at least visual compliance with one continuous strip?
We can only look at the affected area as part of this application, but if the other sites are not in compliance with the code, we would have to look at the previously approved site plan. If, you know, landscaping is missing from what had previously been approved, then of course, the sites will get cited and it would be required to improve. But in terms of consistency, code has changed over the years.
Let me break it down to the basics, okay? I'm not looking for compliance with the old code that they were approved under. I'm looking for a hostage. And I think, you know, in, in, in trying to do something there, in cooperation with FPNL and the people that they have as their tenants or users of that, if we couldn't do that at this point in time as a condition.
We cannot, it would only be for the affected area. I mean, if FPL wants to make those improvements and require the, you know, make those improvements to the other sites, they're more than welcome to do something. But we can only look at what's being considered for this application.
I'd indicate to member Hyman that we cannot create a new condition that's not already a part of the code for approving this particular application, requiring that they make all of the sites consistent with this existing code, would be imposing a new condition, which we do not have authority to do.
I understand that. I'm, I'm looking for a voluntary statement here to try and bring it together, from FPNL perhaps. Maybe we can consider that as we go through this. Also, I'm concerned about, thank you, Don, if you want to help. Okay. I, I've got a concern about the, about the staging area for emergency purposes. I, I love... I, I love the idea that it'll be continued to be used for that. How will that, is that, is that something that has been done to the previous land that's not under consideration now? Do they have that, that as a condition on their approval?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It's something, I apologize, it's something that we have started to do as we've discussed this project internally, and at other sites that we're looking at doing similar types of projects.
In the, in, just focusing on the properties that are before us, then, the, the removal of the vehicles, how's that going to be handled? I mean, they're going to be, I'm assuming that the, all the dealerships that have vehicles there and need to move them, have to have some kind of a condition as to when those will be moved, if there's a, at the first warning of a hurricane warning with the 48 hours with, with whatever. Is that something we want to make a part of this approval, so that we can protect you and, and know that it's something that you're required to do, and have them do, as you sign them up for the use of this property?
I, I'm, I'm not sure that's something, it's appropriate to enter into a condition here. We do, what we will end up doing is integrating appropriate language in our license agreement that requires them to act within a certain window. In many cases, it's at a higher hour, pre-landfall time period. So it, it's something that our asset team has discussed extensively. The appropriate place, I think, for it to be in place is in the license agreement.
I only respectfully disagree with you, but from the standpoint of, of that it's not in your control relative to this approval, because you've put it in here as something that you're doing, okay? I just want to make sure that it's, that it's there, and our folks in the city can point to that condition, and I know that you'll do better than that, because that's your history in doing things.
And we want to have teeth, I totally respect that. We want to have teeth in our agreement that exercises that right, and forces them to remove their vehicles and create the space needed to stage equipment, materials, et cetera, on the property.
Fair enough. The, the offloading of vehicles, not in the alleyway.
Correct.
I, I looked at the site plans, I just, you know, I, I went through them, I tried to imagine myself as a, as a truck driver with one of these car carriers coming in and making the turns through these lots, regardless of how big they might be, and I don't know that that's reality. I think that they're going to be, at midnight, at 11 o'clock at night, whenever, offloading from the alleys. It just makes sense that they're going to do that. How are you going to enforce them going into these and keeping the alleyways clear?
The offloading will actually occur on the dealerships. It will not even occur within these parking areas. The offloading occurs at the dealership, that is where they put the cars into their inventory, decide where they're being distributed, and so that is also, I think, a requirement of the license agreement, is that the offloading all occurs on the third-party site, and these parking areas are only utilized for storage.
Okay, so there, so there won't be any offloading in either the parking lots or the, the alleyways?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
There are a couple of things that'll cross over between the staff report and, and you guys, I don't want to hog the microphone. I just want to go through this real quickly. I think that is, oh, on the, we've got a, we've got a six, we've got a six-foot fence, plus the three strands of barbed wire on top of the fence, making it a seven-foot fence. I assume that's to keep people out, as opposed to keeping them in. But if, if a six-foot fence can be climbed over, and it won't be because of the barbed wire, why couldn't a six-foot wall be climbed over without the barbed wire on it and accessed from that backside? Where the, where the walls are opposite the residential areas? I'm confused on that.
You're asking why the fence has to be seven feet tall versus-
I'm asking why the wall isn't seven feet tall? Because I can reach up, I can reach an eight-foot ceiling from the ground, I can't pull myself up anymore, but, you know, some, somebody probably can, and scale that wall relatively easily. So why is there barbed wire in the front, or why isn't there barbed wire in the back, or something to keep people out?
Typically, walls are harder to scale than a chain-link fence, just because the chain-link fence gives you toe holds and hand holds, and as you said, it's, you know, a little more challenging when you don't have that on the wall. The six-foot wall has been successful on other parking lots similar to this that FPL has developed.
So what you're, you're advocating, then, is to have a wall on both sides, no chain-link fence?
No.
I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding.
The wall makes for a more, a better visual buffer from the residential.
I'm very happy that, that the hedging is going to go all the way around, and the, and the, the chain-link fence will eventually, you know, have the, the growth growing into it and whatnot, so I think, I think that covers the questions that I had that are, that are reasonable. Thanks.
I have two questions.
Mr. Chairman? Oh.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead. To the best of my knowledge, the alleyways are owned, are owned by the property owner, is that correct?
They're owned by the city.
They're owned by the city?
Yes.
Okay. You're going to improve the alleyways where the parking areas are?
Correct.
Okay. Some of those alleyways have some huge potholes, you could lose a car in some of those. What happens to the other part?
Well, in working with the city engineering department, historically, what the city has done, as, as a project comes in, whether be on the north or south side of an alley, or the east and west side of an alley, the city conditions that project to make improvements to the alley that is adjacent to their site. And what the city engineer has explained is that typically, there is enough activity that occurs along an alley, that these improvements get made when they are needed to be done. And so that's the, the approach that the city has taken for the maintenance and improvements for the alley. City maintains it, developers improve it as they come in with their projects.
Okay, so it's, is it a coordinated effort between the developer and the city?
Yes.
So it's be one continuous project?
Yes, it's definitely coordinated.
And the other question I have, the, the buttonwood trees, you know, you, I don't know if they're high, low, whatever the case may be, but you're going to have security cameras. Trees are going to grow. How are you going to utilize the cameras so that they're useful, versus just being filming of leaves or, or tree trunks?
Right. All of the trees that are going to be used on this site have to be trees that don't exceed 14 feet in height, because they're under the power lines. So the trees that are specified will not grow as tall, or as big a canopy, as some of the other trees like oak and buttonwoods that you see. The lighting and the poles where the security cameras will be placed, will be strategically located, so that the trees do not interfere with the visibility of the cameras. We just similarly went through that exercise with, for FPL, when they constructed the accessory parking lot up at Manatee Lagoon, that's on the west side of the street up there, and it was a combination of the lighting consultant, working with us as the landscape architect, and working with FPL's IT people, to make sure that there was adequate visibility.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a couple? I want to go back to the question about the removal of the cars that are owned by the dealerships in the event of a hurricane, or, and you say that there's going to be language in your contract with those dealerships to do that. And I'm just wondering, what, in what, in what way would you be able to assure that that happens? Because I can assure you, that when hurricanes come in, those, where are they going to put thousands of cars?
We, we've had that exact sort of discussion and dialogue about, you know, tow crews, doing it ourselves, how do you secure the removal, and what sort of timeframe bonding requirements that we may place? There is a host of options. A big thing, though, that comes to mind, too, is that, you know, if a storm is brewing down, everybody's in a button-up mode, take care of your property, take care of your facilities. There is always that concern that you may have a user of the space may not be able to succeed in getting those spaces removed, so that we could stage equipment, et cetera. These are not mandatory, these are not part of our core staging facilities, or staging of, of vehicles and equipment prior or post, so it's like an, almost like an accessory element to it, and if it's available, we can use it. We are still, I would say, finalizing certain language that would give us that muscle to get them out, but we've talked about the idea of tow trucks, and towing vehicles, and things of that nature.
Well, you, you no doubt will have the, the muscle in the agreement, but I doubt that it'll be a practical application, because where are you going, you couldn't even find a garage spot when there's a hurricane coming.
Yeah.
So, and basically, they're all over the area, there's so many dealerships. So I just want, I almost would rather you have not put that in the application. You're entitled to make a profit off your own land, so, you know, that, that, that's really what it's for. And my next question is, I guess, to the landscape architect, what, what is the shrubbery?
The shrubbery that's proposed is cocoa plum hedge, and that is consistent with the shrub material that's been utilized on the majority of the other existing parking areas.
And what, what height does it grow?
Cocoa plum can grow up to six, seven, eight feet tall, it's in my backyard, but it also is one of the shrubs that can be manicured.
Okay, and there'll be irrigation on the, on the other side of the wall, or the other side of the fence, to make sure that they're not dying?
Correct. Irrigation will be on both sides of the fence and walls.
Is there any, so you said there's going to be, is there a retention pond for the stormwater runoff?
There are depressed areas within the parking lots. One of the side effects of having the setbacks from the power poles, is it also allows for there to be depressed areas to store the water.
But, but certainly not the water, all the water runoff, so where does that go? Into the canal?
Yeah.
Correct.
Ultimately, the outfall.
And that, and I presume all the environmentalists are, allow that to happen, right?
Correct.
You don't have to keep that water on your own site?
You have to store a certain amount on your own site. I don't know where Leo is, how much do you have to store on?
We have to store, we have to store enough for water quality, and also comply with the South Florida Water Management requirement, but kind of back into what I was saying before, is you have an existing condition that actually likely has a worse impact on the canal than now you have a design and a weir on an elevation, so we are absolutely holding more water post-development than we will pre-development.
Do you currently have approval from South Florida Water Management?
No, I don't believe so.
We have to, once we get through the site-
That's usually before this process, wouldn't it be?
No, it's usually post.
One has to do with, you would get your construction permitting, which is included in South Florida, after we have a blessing from the city to know that, hey, this is really what we're going to go do, because we don't have the opportunity to make, like, a lot of site plan changes for a construction permit.
No, but you'll, you will have to have approval for, for them?
Correct. With a full stormwater report that shows pre, post, the way things were, the way things are, and how we're actually going to manage the water, as well as we've had a very active dialogue with city engineering to make sure that some of your existing infrastructure fits within with what, you know, needs to be done out there, and what ultimately is the right thing to do. So we've been accommodating towards making some of the existing stuff work better.
Okay. Finally, on the, when you make the improvements on the city's corridor, and fill in the potholes that help slow down the traffic, what is your plan to do in traffic calming? Speed bumps, or what?
Well, we're going to, we're going to explore some options, but I know one thing for sure, is that we have an uncontrolled alley, where the reality of life is potholes are traffic calming, as sad as that sounds, so when you take home, take out potholes, what do we get? But what you don't have now is adequate signage and striping for stop bars, and, and, and elements of that nature. So we just started getting into the design of the alley, and what we're going to actually end up doing, but getting that alley into compliance with typical roadway control traffic will provide some traffic calming. However, we do share a, a level of concern for a long string, straight road that needs to be safe.
Right.
One other note on that, sir?
Go ahead.
Just as I believe there are certain areas of that alley that already have small speed bumps, and I think we were looking at, with the support of city engineering, we would be looking to replicate something of that, that nature, but we do want to make sure that city engineering is supportive of that calming element.
Is the alleyway to be paved, or will it be concrete?
The, the bumps?
The, no, will it be, will it be asphalt paved?
Oh, the, the alleyway, the areas?
Or will it be concrete?
Yeah, the alleyway is asphalt currently, and as part of our project, we are looking at restoring those areas of asphalt that abut the parking areas that we're improving.
Hence, the potholes, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So, has, is there any knowledge of the, of the, did we look at the construction of the alley to determine whether it can handle the weight?
Thank you very much. I was actually going to add that two cents in. So we're in the process of obtaining the geotechnical information, which is, we go out and shoot cores, drill cores into the alleyway, see what we have. A lot of times, asphalt looks nice on the top, but if you don't have a good base, you don't have anything. So we actually just got that information back this morning, it was very favorable. I'm thinking because of looking at the variances of some of the asphalt thickness that's out there, has created to issues of potholing, as opposed to looking at the alley itself, including the base, basically saying that, if you take a pothole and you fill it with asphalt, I mean, I know I've seen it in a lot of other places, you got a pothole at some point in time later.
Of course.
Unless you come in and pound down some rock, and do it right. So what we'll end up in the condition is, all the places that have potholes, that'll be reconstructed right with rock, and we are obtaining all of the testing information for the true condition of what the alley is, rather than spending all the money and having a mill and overlay, and, and, and traffic calming, and all that beautiful stuff, and have it-
Fail.
Yeah. This, you know, we want to leave you with as minimal maintenance as possible, and as safest roads we can have, so.
And you work with city staff on what needs to be done for that?
Oh, yes, absolutely. That isn't, by no means in a vacuum. We're looking to satisfy city engineering's concerns, limits, the way that things are being constructed and drawn out, so any element of assumptions that I make in terms of my design, and how we implement going forward, is absolutely reviewed and communicated clearly with the city. It's a totally transparent process.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The city will have the permit.
The work will be permitted as well, sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I understand correctly, from the, the pile of plans that we were supplied, you've got a substantial infrastructure under that finished surface of the, of the parking areas, the exfiltration lines that, that are all over the, the spaces to, to really handle the drainage in a, in a proper way, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
That was impressive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And to accommodate that, we've actually increased the structural number on a parking lot, to make sure that in that one day at one point-
Doesn't collapse.
-that that wall comes out, you know, we're, take care of it, but thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a report from staff?
Good afternoon. Linda Louis, planner for the record. I just wanted to add a couple of things to the presentation. The first is a site video. So this is a portion of parking, proposed parking area- So this is a portion of parking, proposed parking area two. It'll give you a general idea of what the overall transmission corridor will look like. So starting from the 20-foot wide alley and panning right towards the site, you can see across to the north, we have the Cardinal Newman High School that's separated by a 50-foot wide canal from the subject site. And immediately east and west of the school is residential use. So panning back to the alley, which will be the primary access point for the use, and then south of the alley are the commercial properties, the rear of the commercial properties that line Exchange Court and Okeechobee Boulevard. So staff is recommending approval of ZBA case number 3375 for the Class B special use permit as the Class B complies with the applicable sections of the zoning code. There are three conditions of approval. As the applicant had noted, modifications are being made to condition number one. It was presented before staff prior to the meeting, and it was also reviewed by the city's engineering department. And there are no objections, so staff is requesting approval of the use with the modified condition to number one. Staff is also recommending approval of ZBA case number 3375A for the three variances as it meets the variance standards of the code. Again, the applicant, as noted, has requested changes to the condition, and it's highlighted in the slide. And again, staff has no objection to the proposed condition. The applicant has worked diligently with staff to come up with a solution or an alternative to the reduction of the heat island effect, and staff believes that this is an acceptable equivalent to the reduction in shade that's lost due to the use of category two and three trees. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Do we have any questions?
No, no questions.
Hi, I just wanted to understand now that there's this focus on the repaving of the alleyway. I gathered from what was presented by the applicant is that they're gonna potentially, if this gets approved, be responsible for the repaving of the alleyway in front of the, their project sites.
Their project sites.
Right. And what they coordinate is it's the opportunity for the city with the city dollars to elevate that, then that whole alleyway will become a new priority so that when they coordinate it, the applicant wouldn't pay for the whole alleyway. It's just it allows the city then to come in and say, let's just pave this entire alleyway over again. The city pays its portion, and then the applicant, if this gets approved, pays their portion of whatever the cost is for the alleyway. Is that how it's coordinated?
Yeah, that's, that is a possibility. The applicant, as part of this application, will only be required to pave what's in front of the affected areas. Now, they are working with the engineering department to figure out other ways to improve the rest of the alley, and that will be determined with the engineering department, staff at the engineering level.
And whatever the city determines, that would be at the city's expense if it's not in front of the pro, the project that, if this gets approved.
Correct.
Right. So the coordination, it's not, it's like it's at FPL's expense or anything or at their discretion. It just allows the city that since there's gonna be some repaving of a portion of the alleyway, do we want to look in to pick up some efficiencies or something and then just have the entire alleyway paved, whether it's by city employees, if they get the approval, they pick up their portion of the expense? Or if it's since FPL, if they get the approval, they coordinate it, and then the city would just pay whatever the portion is that the city would be responsible, because they are ultimately, we maintain our own alleyways. Okay, so that's the only coordination?
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
Sure.
On the alleyway scenario, is the, is the frontage on FPNL's property taking the entire width of the alleyway or only to the centerline? And the other, because typically if you abandon a, an alleyway, half goes to the one owner on the, on the one side and half goes to the other.
Yes.
So would, are, is your understanding that they're going to pave the entire frontage from, from side to side?
Yes.
Okay.
For their portion.
Entire right away. Okay. Can you, can you explain to me the, the assurances that we're, we're looking at relative to 94- dash whatever it is, 44 for, for maintenance and those types? Is that, is that the specifications for maintenance of landscaping that goes in and what the requirements are of, of all of that, or?
I, I'm gonna defer that question to the city's landscape planner. This is regarding landscaping maintenance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Ray Carrancy, landscape planner.
Hi.
All properties are required by the code to provide landscape maintenance. It's, it's described in 94-446, Part II, which is all of the responsibilities that they're supposed to be doing once landscaping is approved and installed as part of, as part of a project. So all properties in the city are, are subject to that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Last question, and just a clarification, Linda. The reference to CMUD, the district CMUD?
CMUD.
Yeah, in your Exhibit C, or in the Exhibit C, it talks about the additional application requirements. I'm on page 28 of 77 of the book. Says parking lot says principal or off-site accessory uses located in this CMUD district. Is that a typo in there?
It must be a typo, because this is not a CMUD district.
Okay, what, what is?
And it looks like it's the applicant's justification statement.
28 of 77, Exhibit C, the, the additional standards for parking lots? Number two.
Excuse me, but also says the parking lot is not located in the CMUD district.
Not located.
Okay.
It's special standard.
It's in the justification statement.
Oh, because it's not in a CMUD district is, is what you're saying? Okay, I got it, got it. Okay. What, and what is CMUD?
It's the Curry mixed-use district.
That is, that's not a typo. It's the Curry, okay, never mind, got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
They have their own specific landscape requirements for that district.
Curry Park area, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I just follow up on that? Just a very basic concept. I mean, these, this area is zoned currently as community service.
Community service, correct.
Can you define that for me?
Community service?
Yes.
Well, it's a land use that allows for institutional-type uses as well as recreational-type uses. Mm-hmm. Low-impact uses.
Can you give me an example of what type of recreation uses?
Like a recreation center. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. I have one card here from Mr. Theo Harris. Would you like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Theo Harris. I'm the executive director for the Palm Beach County Classroom Teachers Association, and I'm here to speak on behalf of, of our position with this project. First of all, I wanna be crystal clear in that I do support this project. The parking for that area is desperately needed. We have a major need for, for parking in that area. And, and I guess I wanna speak about, you know, that, how it relates to us and our needs. Because it seemed, you know, what we understood is that maybe the auto dealerships were getting a, a lot of play and, and focus in this, but, and they did mention other third-party users, but we didn't think that maybe our interest was upfront. And so we wanna make sure that it's clear what our needs are. We've been in that position, we, we're located on just west of Spencer, and where Parking Area One is located. That's directly east of, directly north of us, north of our building, and in the parking area we've been using for a long time. And recently, within the past year, that parking has been taken up by the auto dealerships. And so because we don't use it all the time, when we do need it, it's not available because auto dealership employees are parked there. Our concern is that, one, that we were not contacted, that's kinda why we came. And I, I was listening to the presentation, and I saw that Cardinal Newman was contacted, the apartments were contacted, but, but we really weren't and didn't have a conversation. But I will say this, though, that when I did reach out to Kinlay, they, they did, you know, respond, you know, right away and were very supportive. So was John with FPNL, very supportive in, in, in that way as well. But again, I just wanna make sure that it's understood that we were not contacted, and we just kinda felt left out in that regard. Couple of questions I have is, one, the statement was made, and I may have misunderstood, so I can, you know, can be corrected. It said storage only. It won't be, you know, for us, it's not storage only. Our, we'll be going in and out. And so it did say that there would be a little in and out. Well, for us, it would be in and out, even though it'll only be for a limited, you know, time period. We basically have all, our teacher representatives come from all of Palm Beach County to meet with us once a month, and that's when we need the parking. And, excuse me, and we were using Parking Area One in the past, but again, as I said, the auto dealer employees are beginning to take that up. The other concern we have is, and I realize that this may not be the place to address it, because John made it clear that this is the construction part, not the operations in terms of applications and lease, and leasing of, of the space, but a profit was, was mentioned, and I, and if he wanted to use it, you know, that would be a concern for us, of course. And as, as it relates to safety, speed bumps, I think would be a, a great thing for that area, particularly the alleyway, excuse me, that's north of us, because cars move rather quickly down that, that alleyway. And, and so it's really risky when you're coming out to the, out of the alleyway, out of a parking area to the alleyway to, to, to move and, and go up on Spencer. As a matter of fact, we even had to cut our hedges down so that they could, so that people could see so that it's safe. And so it's a, it's a major concern about safety in coming out, because the buildings a lot of times are built right close to the edge of the alleyway. So that means that you, it's hard to see what's coming. So the speed bumps would be a, a great item to have there for, for safety. And so, you know, again, we're, we're in full support, but we're just concerned about the parties who use that parking area and need it for, for us and not just storage of, of cars. You know, that's our, our concern.
Mr. Harris, do you currently park in the parking lot area number one?
Well, we use it when we have, because we have a parking lot in our building, for our building, we have about 20 spaces.
My question is?
But we have about 140 teachers coming, so we, what we have done now is, since the auto dealer employees are parking there, we changed our meetings from 5:00 in the evening until 5:30 so that they will, the, the employees will be moved, move, begin to move, so we would have, we'll be able to park in no spot.
My question is, do you have an agreement with FPL for the use of the parking lot?
No, I don't.
Well, and we can administer that.
Right, I know, I know. I, I understand, but I'm, I'm just saying that I'm in support of, of, of this effort to take place, and I realize that the agree, the license is not here, but I just kinda wanna make sure it's on the table that, that it's being concerned, considered. And as I said, FPNL has made it crystal clear to me that they're in support of, of working with us, but I did wanna speak to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And working, that you understand that you would be in touch with them, that I, that what they've represented today is they might be signing private contracts and leasing that out. And if people are on that that aren't part of that lease, they could be, you know, that could be trespass or something, but you'll contact FPL directly and know that that's not what this board would do, which is it's not, we wouldn't be approving this application where it's an open public parking lot.
That is, absolutely.
They still own the land.
Absolutely, correct. And as I said, we've agreed, you know, I've, I've spoken with them, and, and that's it understood, but I just kinda wanted to make sure that the, the need of the other people are, is addressed, that's all. I realize that you have nothing to do with that.
Thank you. And that would be addressed directly with FPL.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the project? Is there anyone who would like to speak against the project? With that being said, we'll go into executive session.
Before we start, let me just, as I was sitting here, I recognize, first of all, I recognized Mr. Harris. I didn't at the time until you stood up. Mr. Harris is a president of the Classroom Teachers Association, and I was an attorney who represented a union member against the CTA, just for disclosure. That doesn't have any impact on how I view Mr. Harris's statement here. I also recall that, I didn't recall this prior, that as we were speaking, that I'd actually met with FPNL about nine or 10 years ago, potentially working in their legal department. Obviously, I'm not, but I haven't had any type of relationship with them since. So I don't view that as affecting my ability to judge this impartially, but I did wanna to make it known to all parties, whether pro or con, although I don't see anybody who's con here, so.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go into executive session. If anyone has any comments?
I'm sure you have.
No comments.
I just will make known that I'm not able to approve this application, and while I don't take anything away from FPL in being able to make a profit off their land, at least, I think that the zoning that's been put in place and the exceptions that have been approved in the past, again, the zoning is for this community services, and it still would serve that and even easier for FPL where you wouldn't have to worry about whether or not you can enforce your contracts with these leases and by having them remove the cars when you do need your own property that's vacant right now and available to you 24/7 for staging for pre-, post-emergencies. I just, and I appreciate the application and the suggestions made for some of the modifications and everything. I'm just not in a position to support the application, so.
Hey, question, Mr. Chair. We lost, was that a regular member who recused?
Right.
Yes.
Which alternate moves up to vote?
It would be Michael Wood.
Great, okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I'll comment. So I think we have to look at things in the, the context. As I see it, that it is zoned as a community service property, I think what I see as bearing on the approval of this or disapproval would be the fact that there've been prior approvals and seems to be almost a majority, well, a good part of this corridor is already being used for off-site parking by car dealerships and received prior approval. So I would be inclined to approve it just based on the prior history. I think it would be nice, as Mr. Hyman suggested, and even though it's not a required condition, and perhaps we can't even revisit the zoning or the landscaping of the other areas, that there be a consistency in the treatment of the areas, that they be landscaped consistently, because I think while it's very nice, the landscaping that's proposed for these new areas, it's gonna look a bit hodgepodge in conjunction with the other areas that were previously approved. And then the other thing is simply the not using fencing in certain area, or sorry, not using the wall in certain areas and using fencing with the, with the barbed wire at the top. I think it would be perhaps more aesthetically pleasing for the community if it was all a wall. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Cameron regarding the, the die being cast on the property, and I believe that there's a, a property right here that's been established by these previous approvals by the city. I also would like to see the, as I stated, the continuity of the, of the landscaping down there. But otherwise, I, I, I think it's, I, I think it'll be done properly. I just wish it was done consistently and there was some way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three issues here. We have waivers, the Class B permit, and the variances. And we would need a motion on each one. One for the waivers, one for the Class B, a special use permit, and one for the variances. Would someone like to make a motion on the granting, granting or denying the waivers?
Mr. Chair, if, if everyone is in accord with granting all of them, you can entertain a motion to approve all of the waivers and take a vote on it.
Yep, so be it. Yep, so be it. So we have to still read all of each individual one? Will we still read each individual, oh, all the waivers, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Right. Would someone care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the waivers for Zoning Board of Appeals case number 3375 as listed in the staff report dated October 3, 2019. The motion's based upon a determination that the testimony presented at this hearing, along with the application submitted constitute a preponderance of competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that the waivers requested satisfies all the criteria of the City West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 2, Section 94-36, and Article 9, Section 94-273A, Sub 2.
Does she have a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes for the one. Then we need a motion for granting the special, for the Class B special use permit.
I'm sorry, I'm on a roll, thank you very much. I'll move the granting of the Class B special use permit. I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant application number 3375, a request by Colleen Walter of Urban Design Kill Day Studios, Inc., on behalf of Florida Power and Light Company for a Class B special use permit to allow an off-site accessory parking lot within the community service CS zoning district. The motion's based upon the testimony presented, along with the application submitted in the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article 2, Section 94-36E, 3, and 4, and also the standards in Article 9, Section 94-273D, 54, and Section 94-273A2 of the City West Palm Beach Zoning Code and Land Development Regulations have been met.
Is that with conditions?
Continue.
I'm sorry, thank you. In addition, the granting of the Class B special permit, special use permit is made conditional-
Modified.
-as modified upon the restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards listed in the staff report dated October 3, 2019, which are mover necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It's passed. Okay, now we have the variances.
When you're in this deep, it's hard to get out of the hole. That's what they say when you're up through your button alligators, it's tough to remember that you came to drain the swamp. I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant application number 3375A, a request by Colleen Walter of Urban Design Kill Day Studios, Inc., on behalf of Florida Power and Light Company for the following variances. One, a variance from the requirement of Section 94-302C1 to allow a seven-foot-high chain-link fence within the front setback. Two, a variance from the requirement of Section 94-443B2 to allow three of the four parking areas to exceed the maximum 25% interruption in the required landscape buffer strip for vehicular ingress and egress. Three, a variance from Section 94-44, excuse me, 443, that's 94-443C3, to exempt the parking areas from meeting the minimum 75% requirement for Category 1 shade trees within the interior of the parking areas. The motion is based upon the testimony presented, along with the application submitted, and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criterions in Article 2, Section 94-38D6 of the City West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations have been met. In addition, granting of the variances is made conditional upon the restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards, excuse me, is that conditional as amended, Sam?
As revised.
As revised? Let me back up. In addition, granting of the variances is made conditional as revised upon the restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards listed in the staff report dated October 3, 2019, which I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
I'll second.
Do we have to read the condition? Would you read the condition?
Yes, he did.
I did. I read, I read the-
You read it as revised.
I'm sorry. The conditions that, the approval with conditions for a zoning board application 3375A include that it complies with Section 94-38D6 and conditions of approval revised. To read, "The property owners shall construct parking areas 3 and 4 with white concrete to create approximately 95,059,000 square feet of reflective surface to reduce the heat island effect of the project."
I'll second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Is he still here?
Yeah, he said he was gonna step out.
Oh, John Roach was supposed to come in. John Roach is leaving.
Oh, let's see, we've got something else going on here.
Oh, do you have a number for Christopher that maybe we can call him, or his cellphone to come back in?
He said he'd come back for us to select the officers. Do you have a phone number for him? Oh, okay.
Yeah, really, hour and a half.
Here he comes.
So normally, your annual meeting would be held in the month of September, but as that meeting was canceled, that business will be moved to this meeting, which would be the election of a vice chairperson and chairperson. So that will be up to the board to make those nominations and vote accordingly.
Mr. Chairman, may I have the honor of suggesting, or hoping that you might consider doing this one more year, and thereby nominate you for the position of very capable chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Thank you.
I'll second that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Do we have the honors for Christopher?
No, I'm done talking, yeah.
Okay, so I would like to ask if Christopher would consider continuing on to be our vice chair for the next year. I don't know if my colleagues here would agree or second that.
I would be happy to second it, even though they're not necessary.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted. Thank you.
And thank you for your service, both of you.
Thank you both.
Thanks for the trust.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
See you.